That he kind of implores us to begin with the end in mind. And as we move toward that end in another month or so, I would just say on behalf of Dennis and myself, I think Griff and Pat too, that we're feeling really pretty good about where we are right now. And so, tonight, we would like to cover basically two things. You have a hard copy of the timeline. Forgive me, I'm kind of an old touchy-feely kind of guy. I like to have the paper in front of me and be able to make notes on it. So, the timeline there, and particularly with reference to the timeline, although we may make other references to it, I'd like to spend a little bit of time on this notion of a confidential committee. And so, that's the first thing, and I'll be talking about that. And then Dennis will provide you with a kind of a status report on where we are with applications. And now that officially, you know, we said we would post this through November 30 with the caveat until filled, so that gives us a little wiggle room if need be, but as I said, I think we feel really pretty good about where we are right now. So, I provided you with the four-page hard copy of this confidential committee process. And the way that this would work is it's a means to have some involvement of constituents, staff members, parents, community members, without having the process become so open that it starts to restrict your field of candidates. And so, we think with the advertising and so forth that we've done, and some assurance that there will be confidentiality to a point, that this is a nice way to do that. And I've used it before in the past, and it really gives you some kind of neat feedback from 12 different people, you know, some staff members, some parents, as to how they see the individual in the position. So Dennis and I will train them. Griff and Pat will work with the REC, with the district staff, and with the PTOs to pick who this, who these 12 people will be. But at any rate, it, with the feedback form that's on your handout, you will get copies of that feedback going into the final interview, the final three candidates. And so, you're going to get 12 snapshots of how the staff members and community members feel that this person is going to fit into the position. They will sign a pledge of confidentiality, and Dennis and I will work with them, you know, in this training session to assure that they'll honor that. They will not rate nor come in with any recommendation to you. So, we don't want them thinking that they have, you know, some real voice in the hire. That's your job. But they will have input, and input that matters, and you're going to see that in a timely manner.
I don't know if this is the right time to ask this question, but how do you get from your pool of candidates that's been screened down to the final three? How does, how does that?
Well, let's get into that when Dennis talks about the candidates and we get into, you know, the specifics on the timeline and how that works. And so, we'd, you know, like to talk about that specifically, and I'm sure you won't let us get out without touching on that, Mary Rose, so, okay? So, before turning to Dennis and a little more information on the report on the candidates, two additional comments. The first is, just in terms of our advertising and really casting a pretty broad net in terms of letting potential candidates know that this position was open. And so, we did the IASA Job Bank. We also advertised through AASA, which provides a kind of a national awareness, and that was advertised through November 30 as well. We contacted the regional superintendents, and I've actually had contact with them before for other purposes, so they're accustomed to hearing from me. And I did that, you know, both by email and personally. And then also through the ISC's service centers, like West 40, North Cook, South Cook, and so forth. We developed a District 96 brochure, which is on the website, and so that was available for candidates if they wanted to know a little bit more about the district. I attended the IASA conference in September, also made some connections there. And Dennis and I met with Sarah Bocek, who's IASA's legal counsel. And we did that for a couple of reasons, but she has a lot of contacts, and I think it's a good thing that we did because her perception of the district after our meeting was much different than it was going into that meeting. And we'll just, we'll just let it go at that.
Yeah.
Okay? We'll just let it go at that. But I'm glad that we had that meeting because, you know, we, and furthermore, with a lot of our other contacts.
Western Suburban Consortium, you intended?
Yeah, we went to the Whiskey Consortium. That was a suggestion from Griff, and, and I want to thank Pat and Griff too because they, we partnered well with them and made many, many informal contacts as well as, you know, the formal postings. And then, as we have screened candidates, we've also kept in mind the candidate profile that we worked in September to develop. And so, with input from you, from the staff, from parents and residents of the district. And so, just to reiterate, some of the things that we're looking for and that are guiding us as we go along now, an experienced administrator, and hopefully somebody that's been in the superintendency, but we're looking at some other people too that have experience. So, at this stage in the process, and maybe a little bit, Mary Rose, to answer your question, we're being a little bit more inclusive rather than exclusive.
Well, I like that.
At this point in time. And a communicator, a person that is not only personally confident, but a person that inspires confidence as well. Evidence of longevity in the position, hopefully in districts like ours, so that they're familiar with the expectations of parents and so forth, and would make a good fit. Collaborative, someone who is able to develop a welcoming climate. Personal qualities, these are some of the things, dispositions if you will, that are a little bit harder to get at, but are honest, not all puffed up with themselves. A good judgment, selfless type of person, somebody who understands school operation, hopefully with a bit of a finance background. But as I was saying to Griff earlier today, this is a little bit like the NFL draft, and we want to bring in the absolute best person, and hopefully they have, you know, a complete skill set and so forth. Somebody that's visible, lives close to the community, and/or might even move into the community. So those were some of the key points in that profile that are guiding us, I think, as we look at this. So, we would, you know, encourage you to let us proceed with that notion of the confidential committee. It'll give you a little bit more input, but still retain your authority in terms of making that hire.
I guess I have some questions. What's your rationale behind a 12-person committee?
Well, it started out actually with a little smaller, but wanted to be a little bit more inclusive, and so we wound up with about a dozen. You don't want it to be too large because the more people that are involved in this, the less control of the confidentiality.
Well, that, and then I get kind of concerned that, I get kind of concerned that it's almost like the board has to take the recommendation of so many people, and...
And that exclusively, we will tell them, Mary Rose, that they are not to provide you with a recommendation, but if you look at that feedback sheet, they are going to make comments as to how they see the person in the position.
Is this like an interviewing sort of a situation?
Yes, yes.
They're going to be interviewing?
Right.
And we'll certainly, you know, with some of the hires, like particularly with Merrill and that, you know, with our, we had our district office administrators and principals assist.
Right.
And be part of that interviewing process.
Yes.
I guess, given that there's parents on the board, what's the reason we're involving parents, and are we going to, you know, are we going to ask that they have had hiring and firing?
No.
No?
Dennis and I will train them, and they will be, be told, you know, specifically that they're providing another set of eyes and opinions that will be forwarded to you, but we're not asking them to rate people, and we're not asking them to make any recommendations.
All right.
And then, we will have them fill out that sheet immediately after they interview the candidate. But then, we also will chat with them a bit after they fill out the sheets, because sometimes a person will make an observation that someone else didn't pick up on, and then they chat about it a little bit. And we find that to be valuable in terms of helping us, you know, filter through.
And again, what's the process from getting down from a bigger group to three?
Well...
In other words, who is involved with whittling it down from...
Let's talk a little bit about what we did today, and Griff can chime in on this as well as Dennis. We went through the 45 completed applications, and there are a couple dozen more with a name in this part or that part, but not completely finished. So, we wound up with 45. And we went through every one of those applications and narrowed it down to probably 15 people. And we kicked that around a little bit, had done some Googling on some of those that we weren't quite certain about, and narrowed it down to 12 people. Now, that's about a quarter of the applicants.
Mm-hmm.
And oh, Jeff, you're doing the math real quick, 45. And, you know, when you go through this process of screening, half of them fall out, you know, in the first pass-through.
Right, sure.
And then, we narrowed it down. So, using these profile characteristics that we talked about, those are the 12 that came out on top. Now, Dennis and I, this month, will meet with all 12 of those individuals, and, you know, we'll delve a little bit more deeply into their application, their references, their qualifications, and just how they present themselves in a two-on-one informal interview. And we will then narrow that down to six.
Okay.
And in this process, we'll work closely with Pat and Griff as well. So, we're going to bring to you on the 5th of January, the six people that we think are best suited for this job. And they will be people that hopefully you feel each will be hire-able, but then...
But at this point, but, so you'll be bringing six to us. At this point, the board will have met none of them, right?
Correct.
And then, how do we go from six to three? Does the board interview all six?
You're going to interview all six. And so, let's go to the timeline, and that'll be that week of January 18. You'll interview two per evening. You have the board meeting, of course, on the 19th. The 18th is Martin Luther King Day, but we want to get this done by Thursday because the next week will be the final interviews. And so, that'll give us a chance to, following that meeting on Thursday, which is going to take a little more time, because you then will decide who the final three people are. And Jeff and I, and Dennis and Pat and Griff will meet between now and the 5th to work out a process by which we'll narrow that down.
From, from what, 12 to six?
You will.
From 12 to six.
From, no, from six to three.
After we interview.
After we interview, wouldn't, but that would take into account the board's input, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Because we interviewed them, right?
You would pick the final.
You will pick the final three.
Okay, so you're just going to figure out how you make that efficient.
Right.
That's what you guys are all meeting.
Right.
And we'll be developing between now and the 5th, a series of questions for the initial interviews, for the final interviews, sharing them with you, and then, you know, you may choose to add your own questions.
Right, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, we'll give you a draft of the interview questions, and then you can tweak it, strike some, add some new questions, so that whatever it is that you have in mind gets asked at that interview. You will get a copy of their complete application on, we'll give that to you on January 5, so you will have that in advance. And we want to make sure too that in terms of going out and contacting references, that that be done exclusively by Dennis and me and Griff and Pat.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't think any of this is discussed with that.
And so, let's have a little bit of discipline in terms of that process.
Especially to maintain confidentiality.
So that we don't chase anybody away.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's been a process with the board members trying to do reference checks ever in the past.
Also, on the 5th, we will give you a list of every applicant. So, you will know everybody that applied, what their current position is, and Dennis already has developed that, and, you know, what their current salary is.
And I would like it if you could at least talk a little bit about what their career path has been, what their strengths and weaknesses. Again, for me, quantitative skill sets especially are very important, and so I'd like that particularly to be addressed.
Well, and, Mary Rose, too, as I said just a short time ago, when we went through the 45 applications, half of them fall off with just a cursory review. So, you don't want to waste time looking at these people who immediately fall off.
Well, I guess maybe I'm talking for your, the set that's already made the cut.
The 12, yeah.
Sure.
And that's, that's very...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to put people to extra work, but, you know, we're, you know, at least me...
No, that's, that's fair.
I've already done this, so it's...
Good, so me personally, I'm looking for very specific things.
And, you know, this is your hire.
And their name isn't...
This is your hire.
Exactly.
We're here to help you facilitate that.
Exactly.
So...
And, and, you know, they're, you know...
Right.
Will there ever be a point in any of this timeline that you guys will come back to us and kind of say, "Tell us about who you talked to, what you thought their strengths and weaknesses were, and concerns that you have about each and every one of them"?
We can do that on the 5th.
Okay, because, yeah, it wasn't specifically in there, but that's something I'd like to know, because you guys are going to have a lot more insight than we will.
We can do, we can do that on the 5th.
Okay.
We'll have much more information because we'll have interviewed all 12.
Wonderful, okay.
So, we'll have more information than we currently have.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess that would give us, I mean, just your rationale for the six.
Sure. No, that's fair.
That's a good idea.
That, we would be happy to, to let you know who the 12 or even 15 people are, because, you know, we were on the border with one particular person today and wound up with some Googling and, uh, maybe not.
That's death to us all, yeah.
Yeah.
Could I ask a question about, you put down here December 8th to 14th, talking about developing the draft of a superintendent contract. Is there an automatic assumption that, first of all, I think that there's a lot of terms that are up for negotiation?
Yeah.
So, that's, is it, A, is it too early to do now, and is there an automatic assumption that every contract is going to be a multi-year contract, meaning nobody, because either way you look at this, this is, we're all taking a risk.
Yeah.
And we've seen how difficult it is to be stuck with someone in a multi-year contract when that, when that risk didn't pan out the way it should have been.
My own opinion, Rachel, it's too early right now to put any specifics in. We can give you a copy of what the contract would look like, you've seen them before, but we're not ready to put in any of the details. As far as multi-year contract, that's your decision. I don't think you're going to get a lot of candidates coming for one year.
Right. I thought it was part of the profile, I believe, that we were looking for someone who is interested in longevity, or a place to develop themselves.
It would be hard to tell them you're interested in a long-term relationship and then give them one-year.
What's the typical length of time for three years?
And most of these people are leaving good jobs, and they're liked where they're at. You know, so you're going to ask them to give them a one-year commitment would be...
What about, what about some sort of escape clause that says you got probationary period? If for whatever reason, within the first year, you don't like the board, the board doesn't like you, I mean, I think that we have to anticipate those things, it has happened, and it could happen again, because you could, I've seen people fly through hiring processes, and it's very easy to make a hiring mistake, and I don't think we will, but I'd just like to see some protection for the board there, especially since right after we hired this person, a good, you know, four of us are going to be potentially off the board at that time. Definitely, the terms are up, and you're going to get a whole new board.
That's a question, I think, Rachel, for the attorney, and whether the attorney can put in language.
Right, yeah, and I'm sure you can, but I just want to see if there's a way to kind of feel out the candidates. Would you be comfortable with such a thing?
At the same time, I would not want to deter a strong candidate because they are worried that...
Well, that's why you could feel them out without just, without, you know, shoving it down their throat, to gently coax them and just kind of see what they feel like, because it's, it's something that can benefit both parties.
I think that you're raising a very good question, and that's something we definitely have to talk about, and my own sense is that there's a market standard for anything, there's a market standard, basically, and if you deviate too far from it, you could encounter problems.
Yeah, but there's... What the market standard is.
We're hoping the opposite will be true, that you're going to put a clause in their contract, that they're going to have to pay big money if they leave you too early because you want them so badly. That's, that's the other side of it, you know?
Well, yeah.
I had, at one time, I think I told you, $50,000 payment for a five-year contract.
Three is very common.
Wow, yeah.
And I got nailed, I wasn't worth $0.50, but I got nailed to pay the West Chicago district. But, you know, it happens, so...
That's something else to consider, on the flip side of it, yeah.
The best of flip side.
Well, here's, here's another question for you. To be a legal three, you know, multi-year contract, the contract has to have goals.
Right.
Right? And so, I would presume we'll get a lot of that from our strategic plan. And then, the other thing, at least that I've learned over the last two years, is that you should have a scheme by which you're evaluating your superintendent and kind of go through that with the, through the hiring process, that this is the instrument that we're going to use, and these are the goals, and these are...
I think you can expect many of these candidates to ask you...
Yes, what is it?
Where the evaluation instrument is. They'll want to look at it before they sign a contract.
Are you guys planning to draft something, like a prototype that we could use, or...
For an evaluation instrument?
Yes.
I've got a couple, yeah.
I've got one that, well, the one we used, and I also have another one that RB used.
What did you, what did you have with Bodna? Were you comfortable with that, or...
It was not addressed with her.
Ahead of time, no.
It was not addressed with her ahead of time. There was, one of her goals was to help the board develop this evaluation scheme, which was, which was not done. I don't want to say it wasn't done, the board, the board did it. The board ended up taking leadership, and one of the first things that we got back, "Well, I didn't see this before." Well, we're evaluating, you know, everybody against their goals in their contract that have been agreed.
Yeah.
And so, again, kind of, that's what I said, we'll kind of learn, you know, through, sometimes through, through experience, that maybe it's something you want to iron out in advance so that no, so that nobody's surprised and nobody's, and nobody's upset.
And my thought too is that during the first year that the person is in the position, and this could be something in a mentoring role that Dennis and I could help with, is it's a nice opportunity for the superintendent and the board to work together in developing that instrument. So you have a pretty clear idea of what the job description is, and what the evaluation instrument is, and how that's going to play out, and then everybody's on the same page.
And I think that was the rationale sort of with Bodna's contract, except for some reason, it didn't end up being a priority, so...
So maybe what we do is we get a, you know, a draft evaluation, we create something moving into this, so we have something, but then we say we'd like... "We'd like to..."
Work on it with you.
"Work on it with you, but this is what we have already." So we actually have something.
I like that idea, that we have something that we put in front of them, but of course, it can be modified, you know, as appropriate.
You can put that in the contract, that the evaluation instrument has to be completed within the first thirty days of their employment. Just put it in the contract.
I think, parallel to that, I'd also wanna know how they're gonna evaluate the staff that they're in charge of. And that's maybe one of our interview questions, but I'm curious as well how they're going to, in turn, evaluate the people that they're in charge of.
How they're gonna mentor and evaluate.
Because it all flows together.
That was very much an issue for us, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, again, kinda going back to our strategic plan, and smart goals, I guess we've heard that word, smart goals, specific, measurable, you know, that have clear due dates. Again, the top administrators' evaluation should be tied to, you know, in addition to student growth, which I guess is required with PIRA now. They have a student growth, but also how they meet goals. So that's part of it, too. The administrators have to meet goals that tie into overall district goals.
So maybe the upshot of all this is that Dr. Burnett, Dr. Kelly, and then Dr. Paul and Mr. Pat could come up with a sort of a draft evaluation that we could then sort of, say, give to these candidates, and that we'll work on this with you in the future.
And along with that, I think that to talk about, come up with some goals that we can include, because one's kind of going to mirror the other.
Tell me again, when is the strategic plan going to be done?
Well, the general goals are already in place. The action plan is gonna be presented to the board September 15th, so...
Okay, it'll be ready. Yeah, it'll be ready.
All right, so I don't know, I can't remember, where were you when we got off on this tangent here?
Okay.
I was about to...
Segueing into Dennis's presentation.
Just before Dennis starts, by the way, the number that we received, actually seventy people actually started the applications, forty-five actually complete. Very similar to other searches that are going on currently are just completed, Lake Zurich, Apptekistic being a couple. They got about forty-five, fifty applicants in both places. So we really do have, I think, a real strong field. And you're gonna be thrilled, I think, with the quality of the people that... Pat, my partner, has done more work on this than me. He's read every single reference letter. He has gone beyond, beyond, and he's thrilled with the twelve people that these two gentlemen came up with today.
So we feel we got a good pool.
So...
Better than I had even anticipated, yeah.
That's very good to hear.
And the numbers are the same, but, and those other districts paid three times as much, but I won't say anymore.
I did wanna backtrack once, because I had a comment on the idea of using another committee. And it's not so much that they're going to help you make a decision, it's the message that you give them. And the message you give them is that they're important enough to be involved. They're not gonna expect to make the decision. But the fact that you involve people, then, is important a year from now, because this person that you're about to hire won't be the board superintendent. He'll be the school district superintendent for everyone.
Dennis, there's different schools of thoughts on that. We have people in the community who feel that they've elected the board to make these decisions. You've got six people on this board who is parents, who are parents. And it does seem that when we, you know, a lot of the community involvement, it's always the same people, kind of a limited, you know, number of people who actually have the time. And, again, you know, who are, again, you guys are gonna, you know, focus it and position it. You're gonna focus it and position it, but, again, you know, we talk about developing the profile, you know, that's a good thing, but, you know, we had different people, I think, in prior searches, say, the community say what they wanted, you know, what they wanted that was important, but the fact of the matter is there's certain skill sets are what's required to do the job, and we wanna get the broadest set of skill sets, period.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt. I was just saying, having been on the process with Merrill's hire, I appreciated hearing from different administrators, because they're the people working with them. And I think the way also that they answer the questions from different people, and the way that they present themselves when they're not in front of the board is important to get a view of how they behave and how they respond when they're not in front of the people making the decisions. It's really important.
I don't have a...
And I like that it parallels the community a little bit. You've got the office staff that's working with them, administrators and teachers. I think it's important to at least have their impression.
Get a different set of insights as well.
Because they may behave differently and respond.
I don't have a problem with people who are gonna be working, you know, with administrators and teachers. I do think twelve is a little large, I do. I would certainly like to see David on that committee as, you know, the only person, you know, with his strong finance skills. I'd like to see him on that committee. But, you know, again, you're gonna focus it and get, at least get some feedback, and that's fine. I just think it's a very large group.
It is.
It's a very large group, and...
Well, and I think when you, what we will do on the three days, so the three finalists each day, from, was it four to five, roughly, we will be interviewing them three-thirty to four-thirty. And they will immediately fill out that feedback form. When you go into the interview, which will be kind of two parts, you'll do a dinner session, which I think, by the way, rather than doing it here, we'll go off-site, and do it off-site. That's been suggested, we could go either way, but... So when you go into that dinner session beforehand, you'll get a copy of twelve feedback forms. And you'll get a chance to look through it. Maybe it'll stimulate another question or two. I mean, you're gonna stick with the script, but it'll give you, you'll feel like you know this person, and have a sense as to their fit before you do the final interview. And you already have met them once before, anyway.
Yeah, well, the board will have been involved before they get to this committee. And I think that was actually, you know, the big question that I had.
I just wanna add, I think having this committee is a great idea. I'm a big fan of it, because this is a huge decision, and anybody else's insight that we can get, I would gladly welcome. So I'm just throwing that out there.
And they'll be asking slightly different questions.
Yeah, and, I mean, honestly, it's our decision, and we know that. But just hearing feedback from people, I mean, if there's ten out of twelve people who have the same opinion, then you can be a little more certain in your own opinion. I mean, I'm just, for me...
Well, it's another reason that we wanted to meet with you tonight, to just get concurrence on this, and then prepare that news release. And so we're keeping the community and the staff appraised as we move along, and no surprises. So everybody understands how it's playing out, and how this is occurring, and how it'll break down. And so they'll have, well in advance, an understanding of how this is playing out.
Okay.
And you can maybe qualm some concerns that may or may not be out there, that we've got a great slate of candidates, you know, that we've got twelve, and that you're really pleased with that. I think that would be helpful, I think.
And as we get into this, we're not only recruiting candidates, we're selling a school district. Particularly, starting now, when Dave and I meet with these twelve people, we're not only screening them, we're selling the school district.
Because the best candidates have choices, and they don't have to work here.
Absolutely.
So we have to make it, so they want to work here. This is a place they want to come.
Well, I will say, as we've reached out and talked to people, and tried to get them to apply, there were a number who were really good candidates, but they just weren't in a position yet to move. Family situations, all different kinds of reasons, but they just weren't in a position to move. And many of them would say, "Well, keep me in mind, okay? But just, I can't do it this year."
Are you ready for...
We're ready.
Let me give you a profile of the forty-five applicants who completed the process, and then the twelve finalists we screened down to. Of the forty-five applicants, thirty of them had PhDs, and fifteen had typically multiple master's degrees. Sixteen of them are current, of the forty-five were currently sitting superintendents. Twelve were in central office. Of the twelve, it seems just about all of them were in curriculum and instruction. There were sixteen principals and one other. Now, one of the interesting things out of this is we have two really good candidates in the pool that we did not include as finalists for the superintenances who have chief school business officer degrees. So we have two people waiting in case you have to make a decision on that in the future. The salary range was quite large, from a low of one-fourteen to a high of two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. The mid-range position was about a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. Experience in the positions was four months to thirteen years. Obviously, the person with four months is not one of the twelve finalists. The mid-range average was about four years. We had twenty-six males in that group of forty-five and nineteen females. Forty-three from Illinois, and two from out of state. Now, from those forty-five, we chose today twelve finalists. Eleven of the twelve have PhDs, and one has a master's degree. Seven of the twelve are currently superintendents. Five are assistant superintendents. The salary range for these twelve people is a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand to a hundred-and-ninety-eight, with an average of about a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. The experience in their positions is two to thirteen years, with a mid-range of four years. Seven of the final twelve are male, and five are female. Eleven from Illinois, and one from outside of Illinois. Now, what will happen in about two weeks is David and I, David is going to start tomorrow contacting these twelve people and setting up interviews for us. And we'll do that typically, we'll probably pick a lobby of a major hotel where we can sit, and be in a public setting, but a little bit private. And he and I will interview the people for about an hour at a time, and ask all the basic questions we should ask, starting with, "What's magic about ninety-six? Why do you wanna come here?" And I wonder how long they wanna come for, if they live with, over an hour away? Are they planning on moving in? For instance, one, we've already talked at length with one of the twelve candidates, and he wants to move into the district, and thinks that's an important part of it. But after we conduct those twelve interviews, we'll be in a really good position to sit down and share with you final six. And we will give you a lot of information at that time.
Dennis, as part of the profile you're gonna put together, where you put about the district, what, you know, how many buildings it is...
The district they're coming from?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the number of buildings and the student population. And maybe if they, you know, if this isn't their first administrative position, maybe, you know, maybe the one part of that as well.
What we'll do is their current position, and then maybe the previous, too.
Yeah, depending on what...
So you can see how many have been, most of them who are current sitting superintendents were elementary principals also. I think there's only one that has a number of years at the high school level, but he's currently a superintendent of an elementary district.
What's the size of the budget? How many staff? How many certified support staff? Central office support?
Yeah, and I'd like to see, you know, just that they've been superintendents of a multi-building district, if there's some good ones available for us. It's just a different type of experience, that's all.
I have a question. Of any of these final twelve, do any of these individuals have, you gentlemen, have had prior contact with?
I mentioned Jeff. Of the forty-five applicants, I know one.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the three people I contacted, who I was really excited about talking to come to ninety-six, two had just switched over positions in the last two years and said, "Come on, I'm not even through my first three-year contract. That's unprofessional, I can't do it." And the other one, because of family situations, and two kids in high school, sophomore and a senior, couldn't move. So, yeah, I know one person out of the forty-five. And I know him because I interviewed him about six years ago. And he was a great candidate then, and he's even better now, because he's got some real important experiences as superintendent.
Of the twelve people, I know one. And as I was mentioning to Mary Rose and then to Rachel before the meeting, one of the reasons that you hired Dennis and me is we don't owe anybody anything. And we don't have anybody that we're trying to advance to this position. And so just because we may have known or had a past connection with somebody, they're here on their own merits. And if you hire them, you're gonna hire them because you think they're the best person.
And Pat and I, neither one of us know any of these people personally. There are two people that Pat and I went after, and they're now both superintendents. They were just appointed. So one to a K-12, and another K-8. So, you know, and like Dennis ran into, it was just wrong timing, you know, for the...
Well, we would expect them to honor their contract.
Yeah.
I would, I believe, if you sign them, they should be honored.
Had been in the district here formally as a teacher, and she is in her first year in a new position, and had just made a change shortly before that, too. And she said, "I can't leave them now." And I said, "I respect that, I appreciate that."
Yes, if somebody were to break their contract, I would have, probably wouldn't wanna hire them. Or I'd have to really understand why, that's for sure.
At a certain point, I think, the four of us have to, especially when you get to the three, you can't turn to us and say, "Oh, tell us who you think your best one is." We won't do that. You know, that's not our job. This could be your job. And we wanna make that job miserable for you, so hard that like, "Oh, my God, they're all so good. I don't know which one to choose."[1686.51] like, "Oh my God, they're all so good, I don't know which one to choose." That's, that's the problem we want to present to you, and that's a nice problem, that you say, "God, I think only one of these three could do it, who's the best fit?"
Matter of fact, David and I have talked, when you get down to interviewing the final six, I don't think he and I should be in the room. At that point-
You've done the job.
We've done the job, and we're only going to complicate things, I think.
Well, again, you want, you want to measure the fit with the people who are going to be here, and I guess that's also the committee will help with fit.
Right.
With fit.
And we'll have already interviewed them, so.
Were you able to meet with people at the recent gathering downtown, or?
I didn't go downtown.
Okay, so.
And, but I had done that in Springfield at the end of September, so.
Did you have other things that you wanted to tell us, or is that pretty much it?
No.
I have a question about the timeline. Just noticing, so we're going to do the final three candidates for the 25th, 26th, 27th, and we're making a decision on the 27th? Is that true?
Yes.
By that night?
If you can, what we recommend-
I want to make sure we have a little flexibility in that, because-
Thank you.
Linda, you do not tell the other two. Let's say if you pick one, then the site visit comes next.
Okay.
And you find anything out in that site visit, you know, you find out that this person never talks to the custodians, never, you know, mistreats people.
So, as of January 27th-
Do you tell someone, do you tell them they're, they are the candidate you're going to choose, assuming the site visit is okay?
Right. But the other two is not told that they do not have the job.
Right.
You know, because if you don't like, if something comes up with the site visit, then you go to the next one.
I'm just worried, so if we're interviewing somebody that night, I just want to make sure, you know, sometimes you make a decision, and then the next morning you're like, "Ah," you know, the next day you're thinking things, and you're like, "I don't need to..."
What I would suggest is if-
I'm not the most decisive of people, so I just want to-
I tend to agree with you, I'd like to have a night to think about it.
To take a night to think about it. I think you need to take a night to think about it.
Okay, I want to make sure we have a little flexibility there. I mean, maybe on the 27th, we're all like, "Yeah, we're all good."
So you're thinking that we maybe have a special meeting on the Friday, the next day?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just wondering what you guys think.
I tend to think about it overnight.
Let me suggest this, okay, that if you are at a point after the third interview, where you can come to consensus and agreement as to who you think the finalist is, then decide.
And this will be the second time we've been interviewing them, so I guess-
On the other hand, if you are at a level of discomfort, don't ever decide anything, not only about this, but anything else, when your gut is churning, and, you know, you're just not comfortable with the decision.
What's the standard in terms of decisions? I mean, is there a certain typical sequence?
What I was going to say, Jeff, is we will script out for you a statement to make to the candidate at the end of each of those final three interviews, and it's going to be the kind of Jimmy Brown loose-leg thing, where, you know, we're going to come back in a week, we want to sift through this, we want to meet with the consultants, we want to yada, 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 to give you time. And then, if you're comfortable after that third interview, tell us, we'll set up the site visit, we'll get it done, and we'll hit it and get it. You need to-
So in your experience, do you, what is the typical sequence? Does the board typically decide on the night of the third interview, assuming there are three finalists?
If you can, I would like to do that.
Or is it more typical to date a day, as we're talking about now? I mean, what's, what happens in practice?
I think that if you can comfortably come to consensus, and after that third interview, then let's move it along and get it done. Don't leave it out there to fester, because these people, and one thing that Dennis and I, when we just talked with him informally, will say, "Well, are you campaigning elsewhere, or, you know, keep us, we'll keep you in the loop, but you keep us in the loop, too, so that you don't lose your best person."
Right.
Yep.
So if you can come to consensus, then let's move the process along and decide it and get it done.
About, all right, so the last interview will occur at 9:00 PM?
Seven to nine.
So we would have to make our decision after 9:00 PM, after spending-
If, if, if you are comfortable in-
Right. I'm just-
Yes.
Yeah.
And if not, and if there are lingering questions, if there are questions that you want Dennis and I and Pat and Griff to dig into, a little more information perhaps, but, you know, by that time, we should have that information.
Yeah, it won't be the first time we're seeing these people. What is the 27th in terms of day of the week?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
I believe, isn't it?
Twenty-seventh is a-
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, yes.
So we would have time, let's say if we, ideally can come to a decision on that night, on that Wednesday night. If not, how long does it take up, how long does it take to set up a special meeting? Is it a two-day notice, or?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours, so we could-
Set it up in advance.
Well, I would set it up in advance.
And then cancel it.
Set it up in advance, and then cancel it then.
Exactly. I'd post it.
All right, so-
Yeah, that seems to work.
So the off-site visit would happen after we make a decision?
Yes.
And it would just be a few people going, I would assume?
Yeah, you would need to decide, I think you would do it with two people.
I was going to say, that's what I was thinking.
Because then you don't have to post it as a meeting.
There's no open meetings having a problem, right?
And so, you know, decide who it is that you would want to go on that visit, and then we would call the candidate. If you can decide on the 27th, we'll call the candidate probably that night.
Yes.
Or certainly the next morning, and say, "Set it up for the following Tuesday," let's say.
And this won't be a surprise, as we meet with the final 12, we're going to review the timeline with them, and we'll tell them that they're going to, if they're the final candidate, there will be a site visit, and start to think about who you're going to involve in your district. Because typically, when you go in, you tell the candidate, the final candidate, who you want to talk to, and they'll make arrangements for it.
And you only do this for the final candidate. I was in a situation one year where I was a finalist, and they did site visits for three of us, and, you know, make a decision, and then they wound up hiring an internal candidate. And I said, "Come on."
They did a site visit and then hired an internal candidate?
Yeah, yeah.
That doesn't make any sense.
I know.
It just doesn't.
So, again, you, if you come to a decision, and you're comfortable with it, and you're in concurrence, you have a consensus, then move it along and get it done.
So are there any further questions for Dr. Benet and Dr. Kelly about the process? Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It sounds like we're very pleased to hear that you've got, that you're happy about the candidate pool.
We are, we are.
Very good news.
Just another thing, as you prepare for the 5th of January, in a couple of weeks, we'll send out a draft of interview questions, and so you look at it and, you know, give us some feedback.
I'll actually-
Add in some questions.
No, we actually, we're going to have to send you two sets, because-
Two sets, right.
You'll be conducting one set of interviews, and the same three people you're going to interview, yes?
I think we need to find two, yeah. We can't ask the same questions? Well, no, and the breadth-
Same thing, your answer, right.
The breadth should be a little bit more. I'm kidding. Yeah. That would be, that would be really sad for them.
Well, you'll have a little time for this as well, because on the 5th, you will get the complete application file for each of the six finalists. Well, sometimes when you go through those materials, they generate some questions, and so we'll have a good week or so, 10 days, between the 5th and when you do the interviews, and we can still tweak those questions, you know, based on your review of those resumes.
On behalf of Pat and I, we're just thrilled, and we're at this spot at this time in this process, and we're very pleased with where we are today, and I think it's going to be difficult going 12 to 6. I don't think that's going to be an easy process.
No, I was, I was going to say-
Which is a nice problem, that's the problem we want, and you want a hard problem of going from 6 to 3. You know, that means that you have some really quality people to look at, so.
This may be an odd question, but let's say somebody on our 6 finds a position better that suits them, and they're out. Will you pull from the remaining six of the 12-
Probably not.
-to replace them, or just leave it?
Oh, before, no, before they're interviewed?
Right.
Yeah, before the interview, the six are interviewed?
No.
You go down to 5?
Happens.
Yeah, I think Dennis and I-
As we do the 12 people, we'll-
You'll have a ranking of seven, eight.
I'm going to rank order my guys.
You'll have a backup.
Generally, generally you have it altered.
Right.
I'm just saying, I'm going to have-
Generally, you'll have it altered.
Are you going to leave it?
So the answer is yes, yeah, you have that.
So, you know, you'll look at the six people.
Yeah, I would prefer that, to kind of whittle things.
Do you guys already have your six? Are you already there with your six?
No.
Not at all.
We have to interview the 12.
Okay, all right, I just-
Well, we had a little, we had a little trouble. We probably had 15 names that we were bandying about, and we had a little trouble going from 15 to 12. And so, this will be, and two, something for us to consider is maybe a little diversity, and I'm not thinking racially necessarily, I have no idea what racial, ethnic background these individuals are at this point, but in terms of experience, male, female, some of the profile things that Dennis shared with you, so the six people that you look at initially, maybe we want to have like a little blend in there, so they're not all monolithic, so to speak.
Yeah, great.
Well, good luck with your screening. We'll see you, I guess, in a while.
Very good.
Thanks very much.
We'll have to clear our schedules for the whole January. A lot of time to get it.
I'm guessing you're going to get an update between now and then.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Once we talk to the 12.
Same, too, it's been a while since I've been meeting with boards, but I'm enjoying this, too.
It sounds like you're actually going to work, which is great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That gets me out of the house.
That's why I come to work, the crying baby.
I told Griff, you know, I really enjoyed the school board meetings.
Really? That's what I said.
I want to smack them.
Exactly.
That's what I said, no, it's showtime. You're doing all this good stuff, and it's an opportunity to celebrate it, so keep it up.
That's nice, Ben.
Main communication.
That's the new quality we need.
Thank you. All right, at this time, is there a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body determines validity, and in addition to enter to closed session for the purpose of discussing litigation when an action against, affecting, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding should be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting?
Still moved.
Second. At this point, we will enter to closed session.